This first brought up at the February 11 meeting and Mr. Farrell, you said you had a couple of changes to propose and they were redone.
Right, those were simply typographical errors and...
I looked through the two, I couldn't find them. Was there something that...
There was one...
...it impact on the meaning of things or...
No, one was a double use of the word "you." It was just simply typographical errors and I thought that should be corrected.
So the minutes got taken very quickly that night and put off to today, so I didn't have an opportunity to point out a couple of changes that I felt were necessary.
Okay.
And if you can go over to page four, the last page, the top of the page, the heading, "Public Hearing," where he changed to the zoning bylaws, changed the height in B3 zoning district, and go down to the first point where Mr. Clegg is referenced. What I said there, or at least intended to say, in order to correct this, if going north on MacArthur Boulevard, everything on the... everything is B3 on the right, whereas in here it says "the left."
Okay.
And then every... what it says here is everything is B4 on the right, should be B4 on the left.
Okay.
And then down at the bottom of that section, after all the discussion, the minutes say, "Mr. Doucette made a motion to support. The motion was seconded by Mr. Strony with five in favor, one opposed." I believe that should say, "The motion was seconded by Mr. Strony, period." New sentence, "The motion passed with five in favor, one opposed." That's the same item that was brought up at the town meeting and it really raises a question in my mind, Mr. Farrell, since you had read over the... these minutes before the town meeting, why you stood up at the town meeting and said that the planning board passed this item unanimously when in fact we didn't.
Well, if I said that, I was in error.
Like that noted, please.
So, motion to...
I'll amend the motion to reflect the changes that Mr. Clegg has indicated.
Same. And you second, Dan?
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions? Now, all of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it? On the February 11th meeting's minutes?
Motion to accept is written.
Second.
Any comments? Changes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, unanimous. Next on the agenda is an access determination, road improvements to access, zero Route 28A, 175 James West Road, Falmouth property in Bourne and Falmouth, land listed as undevelopable. Corinne, anything on it?
The applicants in here, I don't know if they want to say something.
Okay. You want to say anything before... if you'd just step up to lectern, please?
Kevin McLaughlin.
Yes, ma'am.
I am... my wife and I are hoping to purchase the land to build a single-family house on. It's behind the land where I grew up and that's the reason, so. Seems to be... there's five or six houses on the road and the road is wider from the last house up to this new lot. The only issue I do see with it currently is there's a couple of washouts where it goes underneath the power lines, which we would fix once we owned the land. We currently are in a purchase and sale right now.
Corinne, any issues?
Um, I was waiting to hear back from the fire department. We haven't heard anything back because there are... I mean, the road is not in very good condition. This has been before the planning board several times over the years, actually going back to... we've got minutes on it. Let me see, though. Back in 89, and the same... it had some of the same issues back there. It hasn't... that road hasn't been improved at all since then. I think they may scrape it once in a while or something.
If I may, the road has definitely been significantly improved. It was a... it was a... I grew up next door to it, so I used to ride my bike up there. It was a cart path and it's now a packed gravel, approximately 18 feet wide, the whole way. It had, like I said, it has washed out underneath the power lines. I believe it was done by... I don't think it was the previous owner, it was the one before that. He took all the trees down and regraded the road. So it is an 18-foot-wide packed gravel surface that is probably in eight years of disrepair.
The board heard this back in 2006 and according to the minutes, there was... the board felt there was an issue with the width of the road and the tree canopy, whether or not that the emergency vehicles could get down there. That's why I was waiting, trying to hear from the fire department if they felt comfortable about going down there. And I... we don't have any memo or anything from the fire department.
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
About how far back off of 28A is your property?
It's approximately a half mile.
Yeah, pretty far in there.
It is pretty far back, yeah. It's only about one lane. The road itself's only about one lane wide until it gets to the... to the furthest most property that's currently on the road. At that point, it widens to 18 feet.
Okay. For your information, I also grew up on James West Road.
All right, well, maybe we hung out together.
I doubt it. Maybe your parents and I. Back when I was living there as a young child, that was two ruts and barely...
That's what it was like when I was a child.
...wide enough to get a 1942 Ford up the roadway. But it has been... it has been widened and improved.
Significantly, yeah.
It also goes into the town of Falmouth and the town of Falmouth has issued two memos, one in 2005 and one in 2007, which they did place some conditions. You're aware of those conditions from the town of Falmouth?
Yes.
So they would be looking for what they asked for and they said to coordinate all the work with the town of Bourne department. So that would be DPW and the fire department. That was from the town of Falmouth.
There is a letter from the town planner saying that he had inspected it and it did meet all of the requirements that were on that letter from 2007, I believe.
I have that.
I have that letter. I thought I... I thought I submitted that as well.
I think you did. I have some emails, it looks like, and some...
Yeah, it was about a six-page letter, as I recall.
2007 notes, May 9th from the building commissioner of Falmouth, planning board from Falmouth in 2007, and then we have some emails that go back earlier this year. Anybody else on this?
No questions.
Yep.
The option one on the easement, do you own that easement? Because you've got options.
Yes, some people own their easement. The easement is a fire control easement that the town of Bourne has, which essentially if there's a fire, they can cut 100 feet trees down to keep it from Falmouth from making the fire.
But that property is yours?
Yes. It goes through my property. That would be my next process, would be trying to find out about building in the easement.
You guys gotta say, most of easements have that, you know, no structure.
Right, yeah. But because those easements are so old, I just thought that maybe that would be something I would deal with down the line after purchasing the property at this location.
He is fine to make an offer.
Yes.
I probably should go to option two.
I got plenty of time. I got a house I'm living in.
I won't land under the easement, so it's... you own the land, so you do the most areas. But like the power lines, some people own their easement.
Correct, yeah.
They can do what they want, so I just wanted to ask.
One of the things that I recall, and maybe Mr. Clegg can correct me on that, but James West Road has properties in both Bourne and Falmouth off of it.
Correct.
It's been one of those...
The line used to go right through my house.
So you were a Falmouth resident?
I was when I wanted to be.
Go across the room, okay. Without anything from the fire department on this, I would be cautioning the board of granting approval on this tonight, simply because I think we need to make sure the fire department is... as we talked about with the property on Scraggy Neck Road and Wings Neck, making sure that they're comfortable with the access on that gravel road. And you can certainly approach the fire department yourself or we could send them.
I have, yeah.
Okay.
Couple times.
And have they said anything or...
They said they drove down the road. They said it was fine until it was washed out underneath the power lines, which I'm obviously not going to repair before I purchase the property.
Right, okay. Did they give you anything on writing on that?
They didn't, no.
Okay.
They said they were going to send it, I think, to Corinne.
Okay.
I think it seemed like they have.
Okay. I mean, I'd love to see you go up there, you know, help you out, but I think we need to make sure the fire department's... you know, we have something in writing from them saying that it's accessible up there.
How long ago did we...
This has been a while. He actually...
He's here in January 13th.
Yeah.
So the fire department got it, you know, originally done this.
It was prior to that, too. I actually went to the fire department first.
Did you? Okay. Anybody else? Comments? Anybody else familiar with this besides Elmer and I? Hey, Road?
Yes.
Uh-huh, Daniel, yeah.
Yeah, the thing is...
It's right... right at the town line.
Yeah, it originates in Bourne and ends in Falmouth.
Right, yeah.
So, you know, we've got the very beginning and then it comes back.
And the house would be in Bourne.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, can we give him if he brings a letter to Corinne or... they've had... the fire department has had plenty of time.
True.
Sounds like it's been a lost issue.
What do you think, Corinne?
I mean, I would recommend, you know, we don't issue the building permit until we get the letter from the fire department, but for you guys, you could approve it.
But we could vote, huh?
Conditioning it that way.
Okay, is that fine for you?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Did somebody have this?
No, this is...
Everybody.
Open for a motion?
Right, yeah.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
That we grant approval of this subject to clearance letter from the Bourne Fire Department to the town planner before issuing building permit, and that we approve the application as written with that condition.
Okay, and maybe we could add in that all the conditions that the Falmouth Planning Board...
Absolutely, and the conditions placed by the Falmouth Planning Board in their 2007 letter, is it?
2007, correct.
So...
Okay, which is making sure that before you get a building permit, you're going to have to fix that washout.
Right.
I mean, I think they actually addressed that back then and they wanted to make sure there's... the electricity easement's already there.
Correct, yeah. We've dealt with that.
Yep. And where is the close... is there any fire suppression, any fire hydrants up James West Road?
It's at the end of James West Road.
It's right at 28A.
Yeah, or I guess the...
When...
The Wimble Drive, I believe.
Wimble Drive?
Would be the shortest distance.
Okay.
Or Perry Road.
But they... the fire department couldn't run up Wimble Drive, drop a hose on a fire hydrant and run to your house.
If they were to use the power line road.
Okay.
They would.
Yeah, and as I recall, that's a hill.
It is a hill.
Yes.
Yeah.
Quite a hill, okay. All right, we have a motion to approve holding back on the building permit and encumbering the Falmouth Planning Board's approval. Are you a second?
Second.
Motion made in second. Further discussion? Okay, it's... all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Good luck, folks.
Thank you very much.
Wish you the best on it.
Okay.
Okay, next on our agenda is a public hearing for special permit number one of 2016 Bourne Housing Trust for a affordable house in a non-conforming lot.
Good evening. We're here today to ask to... what? Oh, I'm sorry. Susan Ross, chairperson of the Bourne Affordable Housing Trust, to try and build a single-family home on the property located at 31 Wing Road. Carrie Horman, our project administrator, is going to go over the perk test, the plans, and he's giving out sam... pictures of samples of the houses that we have previously built. In the past few years, we've built, I think, four houses in Sagamore Beach, one in Sagamore, two in Katomet, one in Buzzards Bay, and we've had great success with them. Wonderful families have been able to move into them and we're hoping to build another three-bedroom, three-to-four-bedroom, single-family house on this property. So Carrie Horman, our project administrator, would be happy to go over the plans with you and answer any questions.
Thank you, Sue.
Thank you. As you may recall, a few years ago, we worked with the planning board to institute a non-conforming lot ordinance that would allow the construction of single-family affordable deed-restricted homes on undersized lots, non-conforming lots, and I'm convinced that this is a very excellent example of why we wanted to do this. Very nice lot. This lot is about 12,000 square feet, 12,800... 12,080 square feet, which is very typical of what's in the neighborhood. The average lot on the Wing Road lots that we look at are about 11,798 square feet. That's the average lot. So this lot is very similar to those lots. The house that you see on there is a hypothetical house. What we do, what we'd like to do with this lot is to landbank it until we can find one or two more lots, which make it more efficient time-wise and financially to build, so we can go out for a proposal for, say, two or three houses rather than one. Very time-consuming, very administratively burdensome to go out for one. So what we would do is we've got... if we get approval from you, would be to landbank this until we find a couple of more lots out throughout the town. What you have there is a footprint of a house that we've built. It's about 1,460 square feet, I believe. It was a ranch house and you have pictures of one of those there. We've also hypothetically put on the side a two-car garage, and this is typical of the house that we would build, although we might build... this is a ranch style. We've built salt boxes, we've built capes, but they'd all be in that 1,400-square-foot range. We find these to be very successful and attractive properties. I think if you look at those pictures and if you were familiar with any of those in the neighborhoods where they're built, they fit in, and that's what we propose here. The... the only change from the original plan that you've seen, that you received, is you will notice a... one more test pit shown up right in the midst of where the septic leach fields are planned for. The health agent asked us to do that. We had perked in the front. Most of the engineers that we have on the Cape are familiar with soils that are fairly consistent, but the health agent was correct in asking us to go back to put a perk right where we wanted the system. We did that this morning. I had hoped to have a letter from her, but I know she's tied up in a court case today. So the perks went extremely well. We went down 12 and 1/2 feet. Soils were perfect. So that's the only change in the... in the origin... from the original plan is to identify that one of the perk. So, as Corinne, I think, pointed out in her report, this would be deed-restricted in perpetuity. The eligible buyers would have to be at less than 80% of median income. However, because that's done on a county basis, that means that roughly half of the households in Bourne would be eligible to purchase this house. So that's it. We think it's a very nice neighborhood. We think that the house that we would present there when we eventually build would fit in well and be very attractive.
Okay, that it?
That's it.
Okay, well...
Mr. Chairman, the... as mentioned, you know, the application to create the buildable lot for the purpose of affordable dwelling, you know, the use is allowed under the Bourne zoning bylaw, Section 4260. I guess, you know, my one question for you, Carrie, is, you know, are you saying that there's a possibility that the location of the house might change or is it going to be the exact footprint as shown?
It would be within that footprint.
Okay, because one of the conditions that, you know, we came up with, you know, similar to the deed restriction, was that it's a three-bedroom house. So is that... is that something...
Well, Corinne and I have discussed that and I don't know if... from our discussion, the only hesitation, we would be building a three-bedroom house.
Okay.
But we've... what we've run into in the past is the buyer gets in the house, has another child, needs a fourth bedroom, and has... because of that restriction, even if they could meet all of the conditions, would not be able to put the... create the fourth bedroom. So I, you know, we'll leave it up to you, but we, after the discussion with Corinne, if you don't have any objection, we'd like to leave that open because we don't know what's going to happen 10 years down the... down the line after it's built.
Understood. Now, you actually, I mean, you did, you know, speaking, you know, personally, you had built a house in my backyard on Old Plymouth Road recently.
Oh, yeah, great.
And it came out beautiful.
Yes.
But my... my one concern about the four-bedroom and even the three-bedroom, you know, is it looks like the driveway is about 12 to 13 feet here, you know, in width, you know, and what I noticed with that house, especially being on a main road, is that, you know, the extra cars are parking on the grass.
Okay.
And egressing, so I worry about, you know, four cars egressing under... on a single lane slash parking on the actual, you know, drive out here.
Yep.
So, you know, I know that that's still be... to be determined with a garage and the actual parking, but, you know, even if that's just a consideration.
We would be happy if you want to make some suggestion that the...
Okay.
The paving be set up to...
To acquire two cars.
Two cars wide.
Okay.
Whatever. That, it's... it's not likely that a garage is going to be built there.
Okay.
I put that in there just to show that if it were... a garage were to be built later on, how it would be positioned.
Understood. Yes, so, Mr. Chairman, you know, I make a motion, you know, to approve basically with the following conditions. You know, that the occupancy permit is issued before the dwelling must be in compliance with MGL 40B. You know, the deed rider in acceptable form shall be executed and recorded at the Bart's Book Registry of Deeds by the applicant. That the proposed lot is restricted to one single-family dwelling, restricted as an affordable home ownership or rental dwelling unit in perpetuity of the maximum time period allowed, and the proposed lot should not be afforded the privilege of an accessory dwelling. In addition, you know, that, you know, if it was to go to four-bedroom, I'd like to see a two-car driveway wide.
Okay. Proposal? I will, just a minute. Comments from the back, ma'am? If you'd just come up to the lectern, please. Identify yourself.
Do I have a second?
Right ahead.
Usually we do a second and discussion.
Second.
Hi, I'm Margaret Stevens and I live on Lot 6. And I know the percolation test was done this morning, so this was, I guess, drawn after the percolation test was done this morning.
Whereabouts is Lot 6? Because they... it's right next door, okay.
Yeah, and this house, you know, the way it's sited right now is only 16 feet from my driveway. My driveway goes right there, and I'm not happy with the siding of the house if that's... if that's the way it's going to be because there's all of this land over on the right side with woods, and this house is going to be right up beside my driveway.
Does it meet the setback?
Mm-hmm.
It does.
So there's a lot of room on the other side and I certainly wouldn't be happy with like a three or four-bedroom house that's on the hill, would be like overshadowing my whole... like when the sun would come up, I'd never even see it. It's on the hill and then if it's a big, huge house there, I'm just not happy with it. So I don't see why this... a siding could be... couldn't be pushed back and over.
Okay. Well, they have met the minimum requirements of a setback from the lot line, and you are allowed to put your driveway right up to the lot line in the town of Bourne.
You know, I got a letter a long time ago in the summer for a variance hearing, and the variance hearing never happened as far as I'm concerned, but you allowed a variance.
We wouldn't have allowed a variance.
Is there a variance?
Because the lot was an unbuildable lot at one time because it was undersized. We passed a bylaw a while back that allowed affordable houses to be built on smaller lots, and this classifies as one of those lots. So we wouldn't have passed any variance back. Is there any history on it?
The owner tried to get a variance to build on the lot.
Okay.
And because of this bylaw, they were not granted a variance. I think they actually withdrew.
Okay.
So they weren't granted a variance. So that's why the housing trust is purchasing this lot to build affordable, because they're the only ones that... that can do it.
Can do that.
Because Lot 8 there, those two lots were supposed to be joined together.
Mm-hmm.
Because they were in common ownership when we changed the zoning. So that's what made this unbuildable is because of a zoning change and they owned him continuously. So there was never a variance. She did apply for one, but it was never granted, and I believe she ended up withdrawing.
So how can you work on this property without a variance?
Because the town adopted a special permit for an affordable house, so it's restricted...
Even though it's deed-restricted?
It will be deed-restricted as an affordable. So whoever lives there has to meet income requirements.
I still don't understand, you know, why, when we were having variance hearings, that I didn't hear what happened after that.
There was no hearing.
That's what she's telling you.
It never finished. They withdrew, so there was no hearing. There was no purpose to having a hearing.
So it went directly to another department?
It's now in front of the planning board, who has the authority to grant a special permit for an affordable unit on this lot. That's what the hearing is for now.
So basically, it's a fait accompli. There will be a house on that property.
If they approve it tonight, it will be.
How big is your lot relative to Lot 7? It looks about the same size.
I can't give you the dimensions. I'm not sure.
My intent, your address is what?
33 Wing Road.
33 Wing Road. It's a short rule, lot is...
Price of money, right?
Is 10,498 square feet.
Lot 6 is?
Yes, it's 33 Wing Road. It's 14 to 10,498 square feet.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask a question relative to that?
Go ahead, Mr. Clegg.
Do you have the assessed values for Lot 6 and Lot 8 in that package you're looking at?
I didn't look at assessed values. I'm trying to see if it's on yet.
Then may I ask the lady, how many bedrooms in your house?
One down and two up, three bedrooms.
And does anyone know the positioning of the house on Lot 8?
If you look at this, this has the structures on it.
If you look at this, this house is structured-
Pretty much faces directly right onto the, onto the street.
Yeah, it's not as close, not, it wouldn't be as close as this house is gonna be to my house. They're like over here.
This is-
Well, it, 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 it may be-
The house is gonna be eighty feet from hers and eighty-
And eighty feet from the other, yeah.
Unless they put a garage on, they will be closer to that side.
Yeah, yeah. Did you understand that, ma'am? That the, the sides of the house, one of them is eighty feet from your house? And going over towards Lot Eight, it's eighty feet from the house on Lot Eight as well?
That's with a garage?
That's without a garage.
Certainly doesn't look that way.
Well, you can't. Do you have a diagram that shows the house on Lot Eight?
No, but I know where it is.
So, what are you saying? You don't think it's eighty feet from your house?
I don't, I don't think it's eighty feet from that house.
And the proposed plan shows it that way.
Shows it that way, that's right.
This is my driveway right here. And it's sixteen feet from the house that's supposed to be built. Sixteen feet. And then my driveway, which is just a very small, single driveway, goes right into my stairs on the deck to go into the house. So, I would be like twenty-six feet away from that house.
You know, that's allowed under the bylaws, as long as you have the sideline setback, which is twelve feet.
Twelve feet, yeah.
And they're providing sixteen and a half feet to the lot line, and your driveway's obviously right on the lot line.
So, on the, the back corner of this Lot Seven, where it comes to a point, that's up against the railroad right-of-way, is that correct?
Hmm, no.
It, it, the railroad right-of-way is actually-
Way over there.
Which, um, if I can hold this up.
So, that's what I'm saying.
The railroad right-of-way actually is right in that, begins right in that corner.
Right.
Yeah, that's what he asked.
That's what I, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, so, this is not here.
What, which corner are you talking about now?
Uh, this is your house here. This is that stone wall that goes way up. And that's where the railroad right-of-way is down below, so this thing comes in first.
The proposed house that they're putting on the plan, ma'am, is fitting with the rest of development of the neighborhood. Of the same size, the same amount of bedrooms.
I don't know why it can't be pushed back and over. That's, I mean, it just, that's all woods, you know? Why does, why can't it be pushed over that way instead of being like right on top of my driveway?
Well, now, they're meeting the by, the minimum bylaw. Bylaw's twelve feet. They're exceeding that by going to sixteen and a half feet. So, they're meeting the requirements by placing the house where it is.
What's, what is the back lot?
The back lot would be fifteen feet?
It would be twelve.
Twelve?
Twelve also?
Twelve, and it's, what, twenty from the street?
Twenty from the street.
Yeah, because of the lot.
The size of lot, yeah.
And you've got the septic reaching field out back.
What back, twelve?
Septic area, that's right.
Twenty-six.
Only gonna have thirteen feet.
Mm-hmm.
I don't see the back lot that's twelve. They're saying the back lot is twelve. This is like-
No, the, uh- They're talking about the regulation. That's twenty-six.
Yeah. But look at this.
And this is-
Over there.
Okay. Okay. Ma'am, can you, can you guys tell us what's going on over there?
I'm trying to get-
You need to include us into the conversation.
Oh, I was just trying to get him to, um, acclimate me to what you were talking about with the twelve feet back lot.
Mr. Chairman, the reason I asked about the assessed value is to try to get a perspective of, we go in there with a three-bedroom house, or if we, should we allow it to be a four-bedroom house? Would that ma, then make this dwelling a little overbearing, perhaps, compared to the adjacent houses? Um, and if we put a two-car garage on it, would it make it that much more-
Definitely.
-overbearing to the neighbors?
I have a small cape.
And I'm familiar with the, the houses on Wing Road in general, and, and there's, there's nothing that stands out as being an overbuilt, um, house, I would say, on that road. I'm wondering if, I don't think that we can do anything about the sixteen and a half foot setback on the side plan. That's within spec. But what we could do, if we chose to, is we could limit it to a three-bedroom. We could also, if we chose to, limit it to no grudge. I'm not saying we wanna do that, but that would be one way of controlling the, the size and appearance of this compared to the neighboring houses.
If I could just suggest that what we've presented here to you is the largest structure in what it would look like if a garage was on it. We're certainly not planning on adding a garage. There are economic disadvantages for anybody that owns an, an affordable, deed-restricted house to adding a garage in it. And that is, they cannot add that value to the resale price. So, I did this, let me give you one more now, but to show you how somebody would put a garage on it, and what the maximum extent of the actual structure would be. We've located those, uh, those systems in the back because, um, my experience is, and I think that most people's experience is, that backyard for families is much more valuable than front yard when it comes to actual utilization. Uh, so, we've, we've kept the, the house meeting re, back set requirements, put the septic system up where it would in effect. And one other thing that you learn in planning school is, is that the interaction between people is far more where there is a driveway than where there isn't a driveway. So, the likely interaction between people on your side of the house is far less than it would be on the side where the driveway is.
Sure.
That doesn't make me happy. Yeah, if you don't plan for a garage, you can move the house over. And this is all woods, so why isn't this driveway, can't it be over there, is one thing, you know? Why can't that all be moved over?
Ma'am, I think it, it could be moved over, but they're not required to move it over. They've met the minimum setback. And so, it's up to them. I mean, the, the setback itself, that's a building inspector's call, really. Inspector of buildings, not just us.
So, when does he get involved?
The by, once, once he issues a permit, if he issues a permit, he's gonna make sure that the, you know, once that's staked out, he's gonna make sure that that sixteen and a half feet is met. And it could be no less than twelve. I mean, they could move it even closer to your lot and still be in compliance.
Well, that's if you're in a dense city setting.
No, it's-
This is not that.
The town of Bourne bylaws-
This is all woods over here, is what I'm trying to say.
But the town of Bourne bylaws allow a structure to be, on this size lot, to be built within twelve feet of the sideline.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
In the, in this, um, section of the bylaw, we, even though you don't have to set, um, your driveway, you can put it right on the line.
Right.
But not an affordable house, they can't. They have to keep their driveway twenty feet from a principal structure. So, they can't go any closer than twenty feet of their neighbor with their driveway. So, the affordable house is even more restrictive than a market-rate house, 'cause a market-rate house, you can put your driveway right up to the line. But in the affordable, they're saying you can't put your driveway within twenty feet of your neighbor. So, they made that in consideration because exactly what, um, Carrie was saying, that people are getting in and out of the cars, the kids, you know? So, what they gave them is more consideration to push that driveway back. So, they're even more restrictive with an affordable than a market-rate house.
So, they're showing, if the garage is built, they'll only have thirteen point one feet from the sideline.
It's not the property line. Right now, their driveway is forty-five feet from their neighbors.
From the dwelling, okay. So, it's not, not the lot line?
Not the lot line.
Okay. Sue?
The only point I wanted to make was, um, in asking not to have a restriction for the garage, only that, um, we have had, at times, handicapped, um, or looking at, um, veterans that are handicapped, and they sometimes need to be undercover when they're trying to get into a house. So, we probably won't build the garage. I mean, it would be really amazing if we did. But we always wanna have the possibility that if a handicapped person that needs to be driven up and undercover to get into the house, that they're able to do it. So, we would like that option to remain if, if possible. We, I have no problem, you know, we'd like to have the possibility, if the family grows, that they could have the fourth bedroom. If that becomes a problem, we'd rather have the house with three bedrooms than no house. But I would really, um, like to not have the, the garage eliminated, the possibility of a garage.
Are you saying you would opt for a garage over a fourth bedroom if it came down to prioritizing?
I think neither are, I, I'd opt for not to have the garage taken out just because-
Understood.
We had that, that one person, right, that wanted a garage, but, but over pilgrim pines, we have garages.
Right.
It's already there, and that wasn't important.
Okay.
For them, so, I'd like to keep that possibility.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, did you ever, have you step up to? If you could step up to lectern and identify yourself?
If you want the information on assessed values, I have it right here.
Tell us what six and eight would be.
Well, I go, I go as by the address. I think she's thirty-three.
Yep.
So, hers is two forty-seven.
Okay.
All right? And then it looks like thirty-one is seventy-four hundred, which is probably this lot.
The empty lot, yeah.
And the one next to that is twenty-nine, and that's two seventy-two-one.
Okay.
All right.
So, may I ask another question, Mr. Chairman? What is the limit, price limit for a three-bedroom affordable that you can charge?
That's a little more complicated question, but it's-
Because it depends on income.
We could set it as high as two twenty-five or two thirty. We normally market them at one eighty-five because we know people can't afford the two-thirty. If you, it costs roughly two hundred and twenty-five thousand to build these houses without the land.
Right.
So, these houses would probably be on the market in the mid, uh, mid-three-fifties, three hundred to three fifty, two ninety to three fifty at minimum.
Okay, so, if anything, it's going to help evaluations on either side?
That's why I see-
Not gonna drag 'em down?
No, good point.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions, comments? Okay. So, on your motion, it's to approve-
Correct.
With the garage?
Correct.
Any other limits?
Not, other than previously spoken.
Okay. And a second on that?
Second.
Second was from Dan? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Saying none? It's a special permit requires a roll call. Start with Mr. Clegg.
A vote yes.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
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 Thank you all.
Okay. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Hopefully, you can find a nice family that would love that. It's a nice neighborhood.
Okay.
While they're getting ready. This is a public hearing for a site plan review, number four, eight-eight, two-twenty Sandwich Road, Upper Cape Tech, for a solar canopy over a parking lot. That's us. Steve?
Steve.
My project.
You're gonna watch the debate.
They're all different, but, um- You want me to turn the plan around? I, I, I didn't know that you could have copies.
Right about like that, so the camera up over Joe's head.
Just some footage.
Okay. Go ahead.
Greg. Good evening. For the record, my name's Greg Worison. I'm a principal at Greens Hill Environmental. Uh, before you tonight, uh, we're proposing a six hundred and thirteen kilowatt approximate solar car canopy at, uh, the Upper Cape Tech. Uh, it'll provide about seven hundred thousand kilowatt-hours a year, almost three-quarters of a megawatt of power. The structure is basically a, a steel frame structure with, uh, support purling, just like a, almost like a clear-stand building, uh, with solar panels resting on top of it. Uh, it doesn't do anything to preclude it from whether the, the water sheds off each of the solar panels and falls onto the ground. That's why we're not proposing any drainage. The construction will involve the installation of approximately thirty caissons that'll be, uh, reinforced with steel. Uh, the caissons will sit two to three feet, uh, whatever code is, above parking elevations just for the protection of the, uh, the foundation, uh, the support structure. Support structure will be mounted. Um, the lighting, uh, associated with the parking lot right now, there's three, uh, lighting structures with four lights. On each of the lights, we'll, we'll remove them, cap off the electricity, and connect it to approximately twenty, twenty LED lighting structures underneath. I did come to the, uh, the planning board today and dropped off a lighting plan pursuant to the, uh, the memorandum, section three point five zero. Uh, we, we showed the lighting in just the areas, I, I have to read from it. With respect to the, uh, the bylaw associated with lighting and, um, how you need to have, I think it's two candle-foot power and, anyways, my engineers did it. It looks like we have the, the right amount of lighting. There's, there's also additional lighting service saying that parking lot, there's a, there's a, an outbuilding on the front that has, uh, lighting facing the parking lot. And then there's approximately, uh, six hooded lights, uh, mounted on the side of the school building, which shines out towards the field and the parking lot. So, we, we do believe that we have, uh, lighting covered. So, everything would be, um, would be constructed. The panels would be placed out there. We'd install some inverters, which, uh, transform the DC energy to AC energy. And then there'd be a trench line over to the school, uh, where we'd route it up to the existing switch gear, which would tie into the transformer and, uh, pump it into the grid. It's basically what's called a net metering scenario. Uh, any solar systems, uh, basically, it spins a meter backwards. You're winning during the day, you're losing at night, and at the end of the month, you see where the cards lie to see if you have an electric bill or not. With respect to, uh, grading, I, I, grading and erosion control, I responded today. Uh, the sturdy caissons will, will remove the spoils, uh, when the caissons are, are dug. If they have an area where we can put the spoils on-site, we'd like to do that. If we need to transform them off-site, we will. There's one several hundred-foot-long electrical trench. We'll have to do some saw cutting of the pavement, uh, to run it to the grass field and then connect it to the building. Uh, the trench, uh, shouldn't be open too long, a couple days at most. Uh, we'll, we'll run the, we'll put the conduit in, we'll, we'll run our, do our runs inside the conduit, and then we'll cover it back up and let them heat it. Obviously, the school's very concerned with respect to displacement of cars and activities, so everything needs to be coordinated with school, um, in a controlled construction manner. Uh, we'll be on-site all the time during the construction. And we're, I'll come with, we're hoping to have, uh, start construction late spring, early summer. It, there's a lot of regulations with solar, and we're waiting for one more approval, which is called S-Rex, solar renewable energy credits. We're on the list. Um, there's probably about a thousand solar projects that need to see where they stand on the list, and, uh, we're one of them. So, uh, that list should be out in the next couple weeks, and then hopefully, we can get this important project off the ground.
Steve?
Okay. Uh, this is, this is my project, and I think, uh, as Tim has indicated in his memo, for those of you who've read it, um, that the review is, uh, limited in scope, um, to what is necessary- for those of you who've read it, that the review is limited in scope to what is necessary to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. So, that's the review that I've undertaken for this. So, I have some, some questions for you. Now, it's a big structure. What's, what are the dimensions on it again?
It's about a hundred-and-one feet wide, and I'd have to, I don't know- Four-hundred-and-forty feet long.
And have you given any consideration to what would happen if this collapsed? I mean, it's, my concern being that this is a school. There are kids there at all times.
It has to, it has to meet mass building code, just as it with any other building. It has to meet uplift. It has to meet wind loads. It's, it has to be factored into mass state building code, just as any other structure would be built.
Okay. All right. And as far as construction, that's dependent on the, the review by the state and the SREC?
We've already, well, we've already received interconnection from the utility. We've applied for our net metering, and we should have that approval next week. So, really, it's, it's this, we're gonna wait on, the SRECs is, it's not necess, it's an agency, but it's not, it's a quasi-agency, I guess I'd call it. So, really, it's, it's, it's going through site plan review and then applying for building permits. I mean, there's, there's still a significant amount of engineering before we submit for building permits. It's a big project. It's a multimillion-dollar project.
Okay. Now, your application is just related to the caissons and not-
It's the whole-
further development?
No, it's the whole structure, not the caissons. It's the entire canopy structure.
Okay.
The only, I believe that in the application, we were talking about that the, what we were doing with respect to disturbing the ground was the installation of the caissons in one electrical trench.
Okay, because I, I've read, I just read it here, and, and maybe I didn't read it the right way. It says the only site work, there's a typo, it says with, but it should be will. The only site work will be to install caissons to support the canopy system and the installation of electrical trenching and associated conduit to connect the system and the school's switch gear.
I guess it should have been a little more clarified to say disturbance with respect to ground disturbance, but the, you know, the, the erection of the structure on top of it
As well.
is absolutely part of this application.
The, okay, then I, I think maybe we should have that in here then, so that there's no question that, I don't, I don't want to see you have to come back-
Well, no, and, and with all the detailed sheets in the plan showing where it was, where the, where the structural members are and, and the profiles with what was submitted, did detail out those members and the structures and the panels and the panel location-
Okay.
-as well as the caisson locations and the electrical trenching.
And now inverters, there's, there's inverters already on-site or you're adding inverters?
Well, you're, that's a transformer. There's already a seven-hundred-and-fifty KVA transformer on-site that we're, we're just, you, you tie into the switch gear and then it goes back up. But the inverters is what switches the DC energy to AC energy, and those, those are mounted up, up on, high up on the support columns. If anyone wants to see a small solar canopy, there's one on, right off of Jonathan Bourne Drive.
Hydroid.
A hydroid.
Right.
We're either using the Solair technology, which is right there. They have water management there, and you know, that's, it's, this is more of a no-frills canopy, and it, the, the school couldn't afford to do something like that. Or, or RBI technology. It's exactly the same.
And has, has the fire department weighed in on this, Ian?
No.
And, and we don't, we don't mind a condition that we work with the fire department with respect to ingress and egress, and if they want the lowest portion to be thirteen feet high, well, then we'll, we'll do a higher caisson. If they want it thirteen-six, that's fine. We can add a little bit of steel. We don't mind that being conditioned. We think that public safety is important, just as, as with the school children. We want to make sure that ingress and egress with respect to emergency vehicles is fine.
I recall the one that we approved for a hydroid was small enough so that they did not have to get underneath the canopy.
Yeah, it's not built.
No, no.
This is, this is what's called a long-span canopy. It's a little different. So, you will, you will have a travel lane in the middle of the parking area, so you have, you know, four sets of parking areas, and then you have a travel lane in the middle, which is about thirteen-six to fourteen feet high where the travel lane is.
Okay. And I did talk to Tim about the, the grade in, the erosion, the siltation controls. I, I, I think the engineers addressed those concerns. The light in, it seems they've, they've done a pretty good job with that, so that's not really a concern of mine. The, the fire department, I'd like to have them weigh in on it. Maybe we make that a condition rather than-
Sure.
-something that holds us up necessarily, but I'm good for the moment if we want to open it up.
Okay. Anybody else? Questions? Mr. Clegg?
I'm a little bit uncertain looking at this diagram. Is this a flat roof?
No, it's, it's called a dual-incline, and why, why, it's, it's not, it's, A, it's not a roof. It lets the water shed right through it.
Yep.
So, it's, it's just a support structure, and it's a dual-incline. So, there's one part that's short, and then there's a longer piece that's inclined. Why we have a dual-incline is just for the respect, they have single inclines. If you go to the Falmouth Ice Arena, they go like this.
Right.
But what happens when snow moves? So, what we're actually doing is spending some extra money on a dual-incline so that if there is snow movement, it pitches towards the center. You lose actually a little bit of power associated with that because you're not having a true southerly exposure, but it's the best thing to do for that application.
So, neither, neither is flat. Both are pitched?
Yeah.
I can kind of see it. Looks like three panels in, four panels in.
If you go to the last page in the slide show, you can just see the red line here going back.
There you go, right there. Yeah.
Anything else, Mr. Clegg?
No, that was it. Thank you.
Anybody else from the board? From the audience, anybody?
Tom Pappas, they have the abutting property. And my issue is the pictures that they're showing with the trees in the back, and the grading is not like that anymore. I don't believe they pulled a permit to do any excavating. Accidentally, about an acre and a half, maybe more, was cleared, and all the trees that were abutting my property on the property line and then onto my property for almost six-hundred feet were taken down. So, I have absolutely no buffer in between the building that they're proposing and my sixteen-unit development that was approved by the zoning. I have a major concern. I don't think I'll be able to sell anything. I've been stuck waiting for the school to do something, but they don't have the money, unfortunately. But they have millions to put in for this structure. And meanwhile, I remain with major erosion problems that I've had to fix myself and no trees. So, I can't do anything with my property. So, I'm here to oppose until that issue gets fixed.
Do you have any idea how the trees were removed or?
I don't, I don't know any, anything about that. I do know with respect to potential light pollution, with respect to abutting properties, because the lights will be mounted probably fifteen or twenty feet lower, that at least at night, visual impact shouldn't be as much. But with respect to clearing or trees, our, our proposal is to do it already on previously disturbed land within the center-
Of the park?
-of the paved parking surface. So, I, I really wasn't under our purview to look at or, or to propose anything that-
Tom, can you show us where your property is on this map here?
I have a certified plot.
Well, just show us that so we can reference to where it is to the solar panels.
I believe that this is the property line that was disturbed from here.
You step to your left just, 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 that's it, right there.
From here all the way to about here.
That's your-
There's no trees anywhere in here.
And is that your property?
This is the new grading, I believe. And there's no trees anywhere in here. So, it's wide open between the-
So, they cleared the trees on their property, but you're saying it impacts your property because now you don't have any buffer. But your property is the sand area?
Well, actually, they came over my property accidentally. They said it was the subcontractors. The subcontractor said it was the tree guy that he subbed it out to.
Yeah.
So, where's your property?
Um, this piece right here.
Okay.
Are they gonna rectify that issue or what's the?
They said they were sorry. There was nothing to apologize.
Who said that?
I waited a year and a half.
Roger Forget, I'm the Assistant Superintendent Principal at Upper Cape Tech.
You would step up to the, can you step up, Roger?
Absolutely.
And then identify yourself again into the mic.
Roger Forget, I'm the Assistant Superintendent Principal at Upper Cape Tech. This is an ongoing issue with Mr. Pappas about encroachment, going back and forth, both him encroaching on Upper Cape Tech and what he believes to be a subcontractor cutting down trees. This is a long-going issue, a long-serving issue that's been ongoing all the way through. It has nothing to do with the solar project.
Thank you.
I have certified engineered plot plan disturbance.
If you want to go up there to talk anymore?
Would you like?
Greg, what's the setback from the Tom Pappas property to the solar?
I'm just, it's the grading.
There's a sideline during the review that it was about thirty-
Thirty feet. I think it's, I have to break out a scale. Actually, if, if you go into this lot line, and this is a twenty scale, it's, I think the closest part is probably forty-ish feet, something like that.
And the height of your structure is what?
Um, the, the-
On that, on that side?
On this side is twenty-point-one feet.
Orientated correctly, then that's to the north of the lot.
Yes.
Trees wouldn't be a light issue or sunlight issue.
It's a- It's a north, northeast, I think.
Are you asking me if the trees would be an issue?
That's to the north, so I don't think the trees would be an issue for solar production.
It's not, it's not an issue with me. We're certainly not proposing any landscaping. This, this project is, is at the extreme of a budget to have an investor come in. It's, it, with respect to the infrastructure, it's a, it's a two-million-dollar project. The, the, the infrastructure associated with making a canopy adds approximately thirty to thirty-five percent of the project cost.
I think Tom has a valid point. If he does in fact have a sixteen-lot subdivision, and he has, regardless of the lot line issue, if he has a visual deterrent or problem with that, you know, he might deserve some screening. That's just how it's kind of looking.
Is that what you're seeking, Tom?
Yes, sir. I just would like that to be known. Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else from the board? Have any questions or comments?
Is that in the trees or the, you know?
Anything.
Oh, the caissons. How high are they gonna be? We got-
Three feet. Two to three feet.
Yeah, that's all.
Basically, there, there's a code associated with putting caissons in a parking facility, whatever mass building code is, is what we'll meet.
Right.
I believe, I believe it's three feet. I, I talked to my master electrician, and I believe that that's what it is. As, as for the depth, we'll, we'll do the geotechnical and, and based on below count, still decide what depth will be there.
Mr. Chairman, this rendering that we were shown?
Yes.
Based upon what Tom has said, would it be a true statement to say that these trees are not there?
No, those are the trees closest to the school. That's a view from the other side, I believe.
Nope, those, those trees, um, if you have an arrow, what we, what we did is, when we first did those renderings, which were a while ago, used Google Maps, and I know that there was, there was clearing that has taken place for the softball field as well as some parking area back there. So, I, I would say it would be fair to say that some of those trees don't exist today. The renderings weren't done by a local, you know, they, they come in, you have a, an architectural CAD person do it.
Right.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
I'd like to propose that they bring a landscape plan in with some screening, a little more detail on the, the lot line.
Anybody else? Anybody prepared to make a motion at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I just have a, a statement that I would like to make. Tim reviewed this, so I just was looking at it quickly. I didn't realize it was six-hundred-and-thirteen kilowatts. We require anything over two, two, two-fifty to be located in the solar district.
I, I can answer that. Oh, sorry. I don't mean to cut you off.
So, I know that they're a school. They're under the Dover Act, so they have, you know, a waiver of that. But when you talk about it being sold back into the grid and its net metering, I just would feel comfortable to make sure that this does not trip any Cape Guard Commission. I had not evaluated that, so I want it to be the record that I have not determined that. So, if something should happen in the future, Corinne did not make a determination that it tripped the Cape Guard Commission. So, that is up to, you know, whoever to-
I can, I can answer a number of these things. One, one is, is that we're not creating more than forty thousand square feet of outdoor commercial space with respect to impervious surfaces. Two, it's not a structure with respect to a building that will have greater than nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-ninety-nine square feet. And three, your solar bylaw is for ground array systems, and this is not a ground array system under your solar bylaw. Therefore, it doesn't need to be within that district. This is, this is a canopy structure. It's not, it's a totally, totally different thing because you're not taking away the value of the land or its use, which is parking. When you do a ground array, you're tying up that particular use and function of that land for a period of twenty to twenty-five years. So, the functionality of the site hasn't changed, and we did, we did look into that before we, it would have been, it would have been a dead project. We, we, we looked at that well before we, we made any application to the board.
So, that's on the record.
Okay. Thank you, Corinne. Anybody else? Steve, do you have a motion?
Well, before I make the motion, just a, a comment. Obviously, there is a dispute between Mr. Pappas and the school. I don't know, I don't think the planning board should get involved in, in that dispute. I think maybe that's for them to resolve. I think our, the scope of our review is such that it's based on the things such as the health, safety, and welfare of the public. So, if that was something that would bring the, the Pappas issue into play, then suppose we could talk about that. But I think that's a dispute that's better settled between them as opposed to us trying to solve that issue with what's going on here tonight. I do agree with the, the engineer on this, that it doesn't trip Cape Guard Commission and under the Dover Act with the limited scope we have, that we're probably, unless there are concerns with specifically the health, safety, and welfare, that I would move approval of this subject to a review by the fire department and amend the petition so it's clear that the applicant is seeking construction of the, the array and not limited just to sort of prepping the site by putting the, the caissons there. So, I would, I would move approval as submitted, but with the clarification indicated that it's for the complete construction and subject to fire department review.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Can I jump in before you do that?
Yes.
I have, I have a bunch of houses calling on this property, and now I'm not gonna be able to sell them because it's gonna be a big structure with a lot of lights, and nobody's gonna wanna buy, buy a house in there. And- And it's not a dispute against the school. It's indisputable. They came onto my property. I'm sure it was accidentally, but they cut all my trees down. And now they've created a situation, and if this is endorsed, then the, the situation's being endorsed. And now I have no protection and my project is pretty much useless.
When did the trees come down?
A year and a half ago July.
Year and a half ago July. And have you saw any?
I have a lawsuit, all filed and ready to go, but I waited and waited because I was promised that they would put trees in, that they would make it more beautiful than ever, that they would use the landscaping section of the school to do it. That never happened. They said that they didn't have any money, that they would like to try to use the oak trees and the pine trees that were on the other parts of the property. I was amendable to that as long as they, they were sizable enough to give a little bit of a buffer. The lights are a little bit disturbing anyway. That never happened. And when they said, there's nothing that we can do about it, uh, we're sorry, do what you have to do, that's when I pulled forward and have the lawsuit ready to be filed.
Mr. Chairman, what about Mr. Agillo's, uh?
Yeah, my thought, regardless of Tom's dispute with the school, a buffer, uh, I think would be in order to screen that, uh, structure from whatever property about it would be. I don't think that's unreasonable.
I, I'm gonna share with the board if I can. Uh, as I said earlier, this dispute's been going back and forth.
It's nothing to do with the dispute.
Notwithstanding the dispute.
And that's why it's really not part of this project. Um, I'm looking for this to go forward. This is not costing the school money here. So as much as Mr. Pappas would like you to believe it's costing millions of dollars on our part, it is not.
So there's a third party involved in this?
Correct, absolutely.
What about a berm with some trees on it? Get some free material from the landfill and try to make everybody happy and let's move on. Get this project underway.
That would have to be worked out with the school, um.
And the town.
The problem that I have is that they already made a berm and they kind of ruined my chance to put my road in now. So they actually put fill in where there was no fill. And so they've created a situation that's only gonna get worse if this gets passed.
How is it gonna get worse if this gets passed?
Because now, um, the, the, the lights and everything that are gonna be, um, on the structure and the vis- there's no visibility because of what was created, um, and until that's fixed, I, I can't sell anything. And if this moves forward, it's just gonna, gonna make it even harder.
I think you're gonna see an improvement in the lighting with the lighting plan that they.
Absolutely. They're only fifteen feet off the ground surface and they're directly facing down, um.
Right.
They're, uh, and actually, our lighting analysis, I'm sure back when those lights and those poles were done, there was no, no respect with respect to lighting analysis and, and thirty-four fifty. Uh, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna meet the intent of that, which means that certainly, uh, there, there should be a vast improvement.
The, the lighting plan is very comprehensive on this, what they submitted to us.
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Notwithstanding the legal aspects of the dispute, I agree with Joe, uh, Agillo. And I think back to the recent case we had where the campground was coming in just to put up a six-foot fence. And we made them put in a buffer of trees. Here, we're gonna have a twenty-foot tall structure where a twenty-foot tall structure did not exist before. And I don't know, as it comes up into that north corner, I don't know how far from that corner down we would wanna require some, uh, some infill with trees, but I think some infill is, is certainly in order.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
We're just, we gotta protect the butter. That's what our, you know, our position is. And we want your project to go forward, so.
Oh, yeah, I understand. Unfortunately, I just, I just really can't commit to any more infrastructure at this point in time. Sorry.
The other, the other issue is, um, the grading that they show here. I don't know if that's even necessary to have to do this structure.
Uh, no, that, that's just the stone area. We're just showing, no, there's no grading. Zero grading, zero grading. We're not doing any grading. We're just putting in thirty cases. That's it.
But would you do all this if that hadn't been all filled in and all the trees cut down?
Absolutely.
They don't need that to turn around to your structure?
No, no, no. You can drive right down this aisle and right around. This is a subtle exposure we're getting or something.
Mr. Chairman, I don't even know if we should be taking a stand in this either, you know? Between the guns with you. I don't know the legality of it.
Well, I think it's been pointed out that there is no disturbed area. It's already a parking lot.
Right, I understand that.
The only thing that I see is, is the height approaching that particular side. And if these trees no longer exist, then I think I'm kinda in line with, um, Mr. Agillo, uh, Mr. Clegg's comments that there should be some sort of screening there. What, what is that gravel area now? What, what was it cut down for and what's the purpose of that?
Additional parking. Currently, is that the parking lot area?
Yeah.
We're referring to? That's added on to it is additional parking.
And it's just gravel now, but it is gonna be?
Just, yeah, it's a substrate service that's there, just hard packed down.
Okay.
I have a question for Tom. Now, on your property and your approved, approved plan, do you have buffers setbacks that you have approved and are to follow?
Yes.
Do you have a landscape plan?
Yes.
Is there a buffer on your landscape plan as well?
Yes.
And are you planning on putting in your side of the buffer?
Well, it's not on that side. I'm sorry, no. Um, my side has the road coming up, um, almost to the very end. There were trees that were there that are no longer there. So eventually, trees are gonna have to go in, but I was hoping that it would be put in by the school.
Well, anything that happens on your side of the lot line from the school is.
I understand.
Your business with them.
No, I understand. I just.
What I see from this area photograph right here is a
Yeah.
clear area even on the school side of the property.
Yeah, I just wanna make it noted. And I, and I think the planning board should've had some jurisdiction for them to go in and cut an acre and a half of trees, put in a new parking lot, and then make a homemade drainage right next to my property where there's like a vernal pool now created. And now, uh, I mean, there was no drainage approved. There was no environmental permits pulled to cut the trees down over an acre. And I think that it's a serious situation that's happened here.
Certainly not a vernal pool when we have about a hundred feet gravel.
Corinne, what is, is there any regulation on cutting the trees down in that?
Your jurisdiction, like Steve said.
Right, cause of the Dover.
Well, it's, it's safety, public, and health. We come by, um, we review parking lots because you have people driving in parking lots. You have people walking in parks. So you have to look at vehicular and pedestrian safety. So if they created a parking lot, that would come under your jurisdiction to review that. Cutting down trees?
Okay.
No. Um, but, you know, if you're gonna create a parking lot, you have to make sure the egress and the aisle whiffs are all there, so that would be under your purview. But the cutting and down of trees?
But the trees wouldn't have gotten cut down if they had filed the necessary plans to show you what they wanted to do.
Is, is the gravel lot being used right now?
Not currently.
Not currently?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Do you have any plans to re-treat it or put any buffer in there?
That would be a discussion with the superintendent. I know this has been ongoing with Mr. Pappas because, as I said earlier, there's encroachment on both sides.
That isn't even an issue.
To make it whole from multiple properties that he has to the school would be back and forth, back and forth.
Needs to be a joint effort, it sounds like.
Okay, right. So, again, I don't think this project trips that because of any setbacks or anything. This is strictly.
May I, may I add one other thing? You, you have to remember with respect to my site control and my lease, my, my lease is associated with the area of where I maintain the canopy, my electrical line, and the switchgear. I don't have a lease that gives me site control to do work any, anywhere out of my prescribed areas as well. So that, that would certainly be something between, uh, the superintendent of schools and, and Mr. Pappas. I do understand his concern. However, it's not anything that I, I can really address.
Agreed.
And if, if it's a landscaping plan, it would have to be landscaping right beneath the canopy, which is my area of work.
I would agree with you on that, that, I think the scope is limited to the parking lot, the caissons, the trench, which is all underground. It's already disturbed area. Um, it sounds like this gravel area and the removal of trees is a separate issue to my, to my thinking. So, do we have a motion to approve with the conditions of the fire department?
Correct.
Do you have a second on it?
I second.
Second. Further discussion? Okay, it's a special permit? Yep, quickly.
I don't think you're approving something that you know already they created a parking lot, which wasn't approved by your board. And now you're gonna allow the structure to be put in, even though you're aware that this parking lot was created. And as a result, I didn't have a chance to review any plans and my trees are taken down. And now I have a twenty-foot-high structure that's gonna impact my property.
Tom, the property that they're using for this structure is on the current paved part. It's not on the gravel part, which is where the trees are.
I know, I'm just saying that it's twenty-foot high.
All right.
And it's gonna create, uh, no buffer. They don't wanna do any landscaping.
Right.
And I'm asking the board for help.
I, I understand.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, but I, I don't think that our purview goes into that gravel area. I think that that was something that was done separate and above this project. This project is going on the existing asphalt.
So you don't feel the buffer is warranted to?
If they, if they come to us and they wanna build that gravel parking lot, utilize that gravel parking lot, then we can set conditions on that gravel parking lot and buffer. But for this canopy over the existing parking lot, I don't think we can reach into that other area. That's, that's the only issue. But if they continue on and build that parking lot over there as an overflow parking lot and they have to come before us, then we'll absolutely address it at that time.
Thank you.
So this requires a roll call vote. I'll start with Steve.
No, it doesn't.
It's not a special? Just site plan review.
Can we have Corinne's opinion?
It's, it meets everything in the bylaw.
My structure that creates a visual.
I mean, Steve and, uh, Tim went over it and the only thing they addressed about, you know, the size of the structure and I don't have any more.
So, and that's a condition of, that they have to meet the conditions of the fire department? If the fire department changes the height, then you'll have to deal with that?
We'll adjust it accordingly. I mean, it's not gonna be significant, whatever it is.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so these are all fake trees.
Correct.
In the drawing, yes.
It's just.
On, on our, on. Excuse, excuse me, though. Those, those are renderings on, on our existing plans that we submitted to the board that are stamped. Uh, we have an aerial overview that are mo- is the most current.
We submitted our eight, eight sets.
Like a dog and pony show.
We also showed that this area was, was gravel. Uh, we showed it devoid of vegetation when we submitted these plans, as well as this area where they built the ball field. We can only get what aerials we have, but it wa- it was depicted. We did go up and survey the site. So those artist renditions weren't part of the.
We know it's not your fault. You've got a.
And, and these trees.
I do need some firewood for that area. It looks like that stuff's gone already.
Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Discussion's ended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
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 Okay, we need to show our hands. All those in favor? Opposed? Three. We're good?
Yep.
Okay.
Five yes, three no.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Couple of questions, uh. Sure. I understand there were a lot of back and forth on this particular project. What you just handed us, was that submitted to the planning department?
Yes, it was.
And when was that submitted?
Uh, this is more, was that, it was this week?
Yesterday morning.
Yesterday morning. Mr. Doucette, you reviewed this?
I'm trying to.
You're trying to? Okay.
Uh, again, I got this late last afternoon when I got home. I'm still trying to find out whether or not the parking is sufficient.
Uh, there's no student parking for that building? This is just classroom space.
There's gonna be parking over here.
There is, there is shown existing parking here or some parking over here. I wanted to take a look at all of it. You're adding thirty-eight hundred square feet.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I've got some discussion with the fire department about potential access, maybe moving the building. We don't know. You have a drainage area over by the, uh, right field line, by the first base line
Mm-hmm.
of the, uh, ball field. Don't know if that's gonna be subsurface or if it's gonna be a catch basin. I just, I, I just got these plans yesterday.
Right. No, no, understood.
Just got the plan yesterday. And it was, it was January twenty-eighth, we had another plan before us that we continued because the plans weren't on, on time.
Okay, um. We have an issue with this. Okay. Because of the late submission. We, we'd like to work with you on this. However, um, it's not fair to staff or to this board to properly review something when it's submitted at the last minute. Earlier tonight, when we talked about our, um, approval of our minutes, Mm-hmm. one of those things that we had an issue was, um, the deadline for plant submission is Monday at noon, which gives us three, three and a half days to review that. Something that's submitted yesterday certainly doesn't afford limited staff that the town has and our people, so.
I'm happy to come back to your next meeting if you'd like.
I would like to ask that we continue this, um, to give staff and the reviewers proposal. Um, we need any waiver on it?
No.
No? Okay. It's just not fair to us.
No, not a problem, Mr. Farrell.
Okay.
When's your next meeting?
The next available is twenty-fourth of March, which would be two weeks.
Okay.
And then maybe you can work with, um, staff and the reviewer, um, on the drainage and the other issues that.
Sure.
May, may have come up.
Happy to do that.
Okay.
Mr. Doucette, and?
And it would be, uh, who reviewed? Tim or you?
No, I did this.
Okay, and Corinne. And you could certainly work with them and, and meet with them, um, outside the meeting and try to iron out those issues.
Sure. Yep.
It's just, again, it's just not fair and.
It's not a problem. Makes my, makes this evening much shorter.
Okay.
That's.
Okay.
I'll see you in two weeks.
Appreciate that. Um, so I'll entertain a motion that we continue this until the twenty-fourth.
Motion to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Clegg, and seconded by Mr. Doucette. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, special hearing for special permit, zero two, two thousand fifteen, from, continued from January, I mean, excuse me, November twelfth, twenty-three Main Street, Buzzes Bay Village for multiple food carts.
John Mancuso?
Is your light still on or did you come unplugged?
I don't know. You don't wanna heavy, you don't wanna heavy anyway.
Still good?
He's a everything's, everything that's impaled in this process.
What are we, so what are we, signs and food carts? What are we doing?
We're just looking at the food carts. We're not looking at the signs right now.
The signs have already been done by design review.
That's si- design review committee that just.
But everything, everything stems from the signs to be, the rest to be permitted.
For the food carts?
For everything. Yeah, for the canopy, the food, they're right?
No, that's. The last time he was here, he was discussing the signs and I said that goes before the design review.
Right.
The design review has taken care of the signs.
Okay.
And they have made a recommendation for the food trucks. So only thing that's before them tonight is the food trucks.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to show them, I mean, I don't, I didn't.
I mean, you can show them, but I'm just.
But basically. But basically, the, the sign was the contingent thing to make everything else happen.
Question, Mr. Chairman. Has the sign issue been resolved successfully?
Yes.
By the design review committee?
We took care of the, um, the non-compliant signs.
Got the sign you seeing, that one in front of Mr. Farrell, has one copy. That's the sign that's been approved. But not the height?
Not the prices?
No, not the prices. Hopefully, they keep, they've gone up twenty cents in two days, so...
So you got an approval for a total...
Not that height, though.
A total of a hundred and thirty-eight inches?
No, they've adjusted that.
They've adjusted that?
Yeah.
It's a hundred and seventeen.
Hundred and seventeen?
Inches.
Okay. Who re, anybody review this?
I mean, I don't, I mean, as far as, like, the other part, from what I, I understood, all of these things hint, like, the, the permit for the canopy, the permit for, um, all the rest of the stuff, the signs, like, trigger, all the rest. That's the way I understood it. That's the way I approached it.
Mainly, we're talking about multiple food carts.
Yeah, so that, you know, there we go.
Do you wanna explain to us?
Uh, it's been so long. Basically, um, obviously, in the gas fuel business, um, you see the, um, you know, most sites today have a store, have food, have coffee, whatever. I don't have it. And I figured, before I build out the rest of the building, which who knows when I'll have the money to do that, but, um, this would be a good way of attracting a little bit more traffic to the site, hopefully sell more fuel. Um, and I think it lends itself to the Main Street, kind of, what they want on Main Street. And I'm not talking about a canteen truck here. I'm talking about, like, a regular food truck. Um, one that's had, um, a lot of interest is Big Daddy's, who's just in Wareham. It's a real food truck. So, uh, that was my idea. And I was thinking, I didn't even need a permit. I figured the truck needed a permit. They'd have to go down the town hall, but found out that because I'm the site owner, I needed a permit. That's what started all the rest of this. So, um, but, you know, for the sake of surviving in business, because there's not a lot of margin on fuel, um, you know, you have to make money other ways. Uh, this would give me, like, a food attraction without a lot of capital. And I think, you know, it lends to the theme of the area, what you want on Main Street, um, you know, and that's why I submitted it.
Do you have any depictions of what these food carts would look like? Do you have any?
Well, that, I think part, one of the stipulations was that I, when I decided on picking it, because, number one, you, you don't know me, but I'm, it's my property. If I'm gonna pick a food truck, they're gonna be licensed, they're gonna be insured, they're gonna, you know what I'm saying? And because I don't want any headaches. So, but I think one of the stipulations back then was that I submit a copy of what, you know, whatever one I choose to bring it before the committee. Am I right? I think it's one of the conditions.
Yeah, before you finalize.
Before I finalize any arrangements with that vendor.
Okay.
So, that's the way it was left and it was part of the contingencies.
Okay. So, by saying vendor, are you talking about a third party who would have a food truck?
Yeah, they're gonna be a licensed in the town of Born, you know, with their own insurance, in their own, you know, food truck, whatever you wanna call it, trailer truck. But basically, I would be arranging a lease with them.
So they'd be utilizing your property?
Right.
They would own the food cart?
Yes.
They would be licensed separately?
Yes.
You just wanna be able to have them parked?
Right, and I thought I could do that without a permit, but obviously, I needed one.
Okay, I understand.
Mr. Chairman, at one point, we saw our diagram that, where he was, he was requesting three spaces for three trucks.
No, I, I requested one permanent one. I have it wrong, if you don't...
Okay, yeah, that's weird. That'll be helpful, 'cause this does go back to November.
I'm sorry.
Go back waiting for like, like, May, June.
All right, yeah, close to...
It's been so long that I can understand. I got so many papers here that...
But, as I recall, one of the issues was whether we wanted to approve a total of three spaces.
No, no, it wasn't the three. Um, the way it was finally settled with the design review is they allowed one, uh, permanent, permanent one, or every day, seven day of a week one, and, and then I would be able to possibly put a second one as just a temporary.
Mr. Chairman, the recommendation from the design review committee was, um, to issue a one-year special permit for the permanent food truck only, and the planning board should review the impacts of the proposal for the next year to consider the additional food trucks. So they're saying to go with that one permanent one after a year, if you guys are satisfied that the site, you know, is able to handle that, to consider the other trucks. So that was the recommendation from the design review.
Did they suggest any particular location on this?
Yes, there's one. It shows on the plan that he submitted.
Which one is it? 'Cause I have...
So it would go in this big open space, which, if you were facing his service space, it'd be a lot for the base.
I got, I have a vote, one here, um, that might help you. I don't even know if this is the final one, but I've been going through it. This is where the approved location was, the permanent one, okay?
So, so...
I believe the, the inside three.
Yeah.
But they approved that one?
Yeah, you guys have been deciding the factor, not them. They just recommended.
Strictly from a temporary one, like, on weekends or holidays, uh, from what I understand. But this is the permit, what space here.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, so there's some confusion here, wait.
Yeah.
Where he...
Where he just showed me is different from what you folks just showed me. Is it the space between the building and the corner?
No.
It's right here.
Right, but, yeah, that's the same place.
Okay.
Same place.
No, the confusion, Mr. Chairman, is that, is that for one truck that they, that they approved with the design committee opposed to him saying that they allowed temporary ones on holidays and weekends?
No, their recommendation was for one year, one permanent truck.
So no weekend and holiday secondary trucks for that first year?
Right.
Okay.
So that permanent one would be seven days a week, and then after that year, we would review it again, see how it worked, and maybe condition it up.
Then allow some temporary for special events, like if the park were to have an event, they could bring in a truck or, you know, at that time. Because they were kinda concerned about the, um, vehicular circulation and the pedestrian circulation, that you're bringing people to that site and they're walking all around there. Um, so they wanna kinda see how that was going to, you know, kinda play out.
Okay.
I, I mean, I, I took it as, and this is, maybe I'm wrong, probably am, but, um, from what I understand, from the bylaws and all this process, is the one truck that's permanent, I need a permit for. That's what I'm before you for.
Mm-hmm.
From what I understand, the second truck, if it's just for weekends or holidays or something, I don't need to go before any board or committee. That's my understanding.
Okay. The town plan is telling us that that is not the condition that they set.
If the truck is stationary, if it stays in a place more than, I think it's fifteen minutes or twenty minutes, Karen, then it has to be permitted by you. So it's considered a permit, even though they may move after a day.
Right.
It's not transient. So if they're gonna be there for two, three days, that needs to be permitted, because you're drawing people to the site.
Right.
And you have to make sure that it's safe.
Compared to like an ice cream truck going through the neighborhood.
Right, right.
Okay.
The reason why I'm asking, and the reason why this come up, is I went for a temporary one, and it was stopped because of this process. And from what I understand, you go to the selectman's office, you fill out the form, and you can have a temporary permit for X dates. That's what I was told. That's, I, I, I'm only relaying, I'm being honest, yeah, that's what I did.
Okay.
Okay, so, I, whatever you people do and have jurisdiction, at this point, okay, I, I mean, I have pretty much everything in compliance the way that you want it, and without lawyering up and without ruffling feathers, and I don't wanna do that.
Okay.
All right?
All right, appreciate that. I think, uh, I think the board, my suggestion was be that we would go along with what the design review committee has already suggested.
Were there any other conditions placed on the one truck?
I, I would just go along with what they said. The location of the one truck, we'll review it after a year, and if there's no circulation problems, and if there's no other issues, then we can look at permitting the other temporary ones. But for right now, let's start out with the one.
And I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. It's, it is a tight spot. I do know that, uh, from your site, that, that, some of that area is used for parking, so if this truck, you're not gonna be able to.
Right, but we have plenty other.
Out in the back?
Right.
You have...
Or on the side.
Okay.
The other side.
Okay.
So, I mean, I, I feel, I mean, listen, I haven't decided on a truck, and I haven't, who knows if I'll even have a truck this season? I don't know. Okay? It's been so long. I thought I'd have it last season, okay? But, put it this way, I, I wanna at least be able to attempt to draw the best one that I think fits for what we all want.
Okay.
Okay? It's not just me. It's, obviously, me financially, but, you know, that's something that I'm gonna be proud of, that, and you're gonna want there.
Okay. And I, and I think that that's, that would be another thing that we would probably condition this, that we would like to see.
Oh, that's already in there.
Okay.
Oh, that was, that was my question.
Do we have, do we have a rendering of what this truck, do you already have the truck, or does it?
No, 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 but, no, I have, the only thing I, I had done was, and, I have to go through all that, but... In the case like Big Daddy's, uh, you know, I'm sure you're aware of it. You see it.
Yeah.
Cape Cod, you know?
No, that's, that's, that's...
All right, I'm sorry, that's in Wareham. All right, but, all, all I'm gonna say is, I'm gonna bring a picture, a photo, whatever you wanna call it, to them.
Okay.
And they're gonna approve it or deny it. And, and I can assure you, whoever it is, you'll be pleased.
Okay.
I, I, I don't think there's gonna be any problem there.
I would love to take your word on that.
Oh, no, and I don't want you to take my word. It's already in the wording of the thing.
So I would say that, you know, we'll entertain a motion at some point in time, but the conditions would be, um, that we have a depiction of what the actual truck that is gonna be used. That we go along with the design review committee for the one permanent truck, and after a year, we would then review the possibility of...
Right.
Your other temporary truck.
And, and does that mean, so I know.
Yep.
Um, I bring the design review committee, or Corinne, the picture, or do I have to come before both meetings again?
I would...
This is my question.
Right, I would think...
Is it, is it, do we, do we wanna have him come before this board, or is there some way we can delegate that decision to the design review committee? May not be possible, or you may not wanna do that. I don't know.
I, I think that...
We don't know if we're gonna give him yet.
Right, so that's the other thing, so...
Oh, that's true.
Whatever.
I didn't see anything in, uh, the vision for food trucks in Buzzers Bay. I think it takes away from the bricks and mortar people that are paying rent and taxes. That's my opinion.
Which, which ones? The ones that are all closing?
Well, we're trying.
Okay, but, listen, listen to me, and, and, you know, obviously, this is only for one year?
Yeah.
I intend to build out the site sooner or later, when I have the financial capabilities. Whatever that is, it is, and it's gonna come before you. This is a temporary thing, and that's why the year thing, that's fine.
Okay.
Reviewing what it looks like, that's fine. But for traffic on Main Street, okay, as far as whatever businesses there, right now, I, I think it only can lend to what's going on that I see. And, and I'm not trying to hit, hurt any brick and mortar. I'm brick and mortar, all right? That's not the, the, the point is not that. And that's why I think you're requiring me to get a permit for a truck that's already permitted in the town. If he was parked on the street or across the street, okay, at a fair, huh, they don't need a permit.
Right.
But because it's my private property, I need a permit.
Right.
Okay, so, it's not fair in some ways, but...
You're absolutely right.
And, and all I'm saying is, I'm, I have no problem showing a picture to the design review or whoa, but I mean, to come before two boards again, or the committee again, and then the board again, seems to me like, it, it, this has already been almost a year.
Okay. Corinne, can you just tell us again what the design review committee suggested on that?
I actually found their other recommendation with, is, um...
Is a fence involved?
Yeah, fence and stuff like that.
I know.
They recommend that the planning board issue a one-year special permit for the permanent food truck only. The planning board should review the impacts of the proposal for the next year and consider additional trucks in the future. They also recommend that the seating area, 'cause he's talked about maybe having a picnic table in front, that that be with a temporary fence, like they sort of did in front of that Buzzers Bay tavern, with the, um, pots.
Okay.
So that it's designated off, so if people are there and cars know where their eating area is.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
So this special permit recommendation is for one year, and after one year...
One, one truck, one year.
He's gotta come back.
He's gonna come back.
Right. Just wanna make sure, that we're not granting it perpetually, granting it for one year.
That's the recommendation, yes.
Okay. Anybody wanna propose a motion on this?
I have a question.
Oh?
I do, too.
I know. I'm sorry. So, if, if we grant this for one year, after one year, would he have to reapply for another one for the other trucks?
He could come back to you before the end of that permit expires and ask for an extension. You could amend the condition on that permit.
Okay.
So he doesn't have to go through that process all again. So you can say, okay, now you've done your year, we like it, we're gonna give you three years or whatever, or you can say, no, we don't like it, and we're not gonna grant you a permit.
Who's gonna mon, who's gonna monitor this to, to help us decide whether to...
Well...
Mr. Chairman, uh, Corinne, we give him a shot for one year, and he comes back, and we say, okay, you did a great job, or you didn't do a good job, and say he did do a good job, and we give him the permit. And then the second and third year goes down the tubes. It's, it's, you know, the kids are leaving, they're throwing the papers, kids are running across the street, a couple get killed. What do we do then?
Special permits are always revocable.
Right. But we, we never revoked them.
Well, you can. You have that authority to bring them back in.
I think we have.
If they're not, if they're not, you know, in line with the conditions. But you're gonna remember, this is a food service.
Right.
They have to go before border health, and they have to go to the selectmen to get their, their, their license.
And I could...
So we have to sign off on that.
Right.
So when he comes for the next year to sign off, if he has not fulfilled the conditions of his special permit, we're not gonna sign up on those food permits.
And I, I can, I can assure you, the food truck's gonna have insurance on top of what you require, okay? Because, you know, who's liable?
Right.
Okay, so, believe me, I'm gonna protect myself, which will also, in turn, make sure you have the right for, truck there.
Okay.
One more thing. How does it benefit the town by taxes? What, what do we get out of it? The food tax, or how do we monitor that, or sales tax, you know?
I mean, yeah, sales tax, and plus, you're, food trucks, they're emerging. If you look all across the country, they have shows on food trucks.
Yeah, I know.
You know, it's something that's emerging and that people like, and, you know, if you go down the Barnstable County Fair, they have food truck...
Right.
Fairs down there that people go. So it's something that the, the population is really, um, visiting, and they like them. But they have to be, you know, quality, and that's why we're suggesting the one year, that if this is a quality, and it's serving your public, and it's a public service, that people do go there, they have, you know, some of them have quality food better than sit-down restaurants. So, you know, you're, you're providing a service to your public. Um, yeah, well, there'd be some small taxes, yeah, there'll be some taxes and things like that. But you, you're also looking, no, But you're, you're also looking, no, it's not what you downtown, you don't want 100 food trucks in your downtown, but it's amenity that you're looking at.
And also, you'll have a thriving business on Main Street, okay?
Amen. First one.
Okay, I, I just want to add that in there, and if anybody goes by the property, you can tell me whether I keep it neat, neat and clean.
Okay.
Okay, so don't, you know...
Absolutely. There's no question the property is neat and clean. You've done a fantastic job so far.
Just quick question. If we do approve one permanent food truck, is that relative to only the one that gets approved? Or can he switch it out to another permanent food truck within that year?
I think we could.
I would think that I would have to bring the, the truck picture to, to somebody.
If, if somebody wants to make a motion, then we can certainly put that into the motion.
I just had a couple of questions.
Mr. Gillo?
I mean, just, it might be the Board of Health issue too, but like the sanitary issues. Are you capable with bathrooms and able to handle the influx of people that you have?
The 500 people that are gonna show up for lunch?
Water supply for the food truck?
I, I have water supply, I have electric, I have bathrooms.
I mean, we always hear the stories of the hot dog vendors and that of, you know, how unsanitary they can be and that.
I, I can, listen, all I can tell you is women come into me daily or weekly or whatever you wanna call it. And, and I might have an old facility and old bathrooms, but they're kept clean, okay? So, uh, if you look at the outside, you know that. So, I, I mean, listen, I think you gotta put faith in, you know, I understand, hey, it's me. You don't know what's gonna happen, none of it. Okay, but you gotta put faith in a business person, in a property owner, okay, that, you know, they're gonna do the right thing. Maybe not all of them, maybe not all of them, okay, but I'm going to.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
If I might add a comment. If you recall, a few years ago, Mike Penner, when the restaurant burned down and we wanted him to put up a classy restaurant, which he was going to, and I fought like heck with him for a long time, and he decided to put up his three trucks. He wasn't there a year, all right? Right down the tube. And those were expensive, high-class, quality food trucks. And they went nowhere, all right? As far as I'm concerned, I was against the food trucks at the park, all right? Basically, 'cause what Vinnie said, we're trying to pump life into Main Street businesses, and this is detracting from Main Street businesses.
Oh.
The same way with the guy at the tavern with his hot dog stand and whatever, or his sausage cart and everything else, okay? You're, we're opening Pandora's box here and it's very little value to the town of Born. And if that's what you want for Main Street, fine. It's not my vision of Main Street, but that's all I'm gonna say. So Mike Penner spent a lot of dough on three trucks, all right, and his business went nowhere, and he was out of business in a year. So I'll leave it at that.
Hey, I, I didn't say that this, this might not be successful, you know what I'm saying? So I have no idea.
Okay. All right. Does anybody wanna? Okay. Does anybody wanna offer a motion, one way or the other?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve with the conditions of the design review committee and that the applicant comes back if there's a change in trucks to the design review committee for approval of the change of trucks. So we have the same style, or the style approved by the design review committee. And that the special permit runs for one year and he's gotta come back for us to extend it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Doucette, and that's seconded by Mr. Clegg. Mr. Clegg?
I'd like to amend that motion that this board approve the first truck, which was the only item you left out of that.
I don't get, I thought it was gonna be the design review committee who approved that truck with the picture.
I don't know if we can delegate, can we delegate that authority to them? They can only recommend to us.
Right.
It's my understanding.
So I think it would have to come back to us.
So rather than have them go two places, let's have them come once. Come here.
Come here. I'll, I'll make that amendment to my motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
That you've amended.
I'll second the amendment.
So I, I just make sure I understand. So before the year is up, I come before you and say, can I have it another year?
Before you, before you start, you come to us and say, here's the truck I want to put in.
Well, oh, yeah, yeah.
Then, and then after you get going.
Okay.
Okay.
Before the end of the first year.
Okay, so the amendment is that the trucks' mittal has to be made to this board?
To this board.
For approval.
Yes.
Is that fair enough, sir?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, it is a special permit, so we're gonna have to go around, around the horn here on that. I have a motion, I have a second. Any further comments? Mr. Mulvey, you've been awfully quiet tonight.
It's been an interesting meeting.
Thank you, sir.
No comment?
Okay. I'll start with Mr. Clegg.
I will vote yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes.
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 What do you got?
Five yeses.
Five yeses?
Three noes.
Three noes?
I need one more yes.
Okay. I'm not comfortable with it. I'm gonna say no. I don't think that this is what we envisioned for Main Street some years ago when we, um, rezoned Main Street and put everything into it. And I just don't think that this is the right spot for that. Um, I understand you're a businessman, you're trying everything you can to make a go of it, but this is not what I had envisioned, and I don't think it's what the board had envisioned, so I'm gonna say no. So it's defeated by a vote of five-four? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Sorry, but that's it.
Okay, so putting the food truck aside, what happens with everything else?
You've already passed the design review on your new sign?
And all the rest of it, okay.
That's, that's, that was them and that's where I'll sit. Okay.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Go ahead, a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have...